Like to call the meeting to order, roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Present.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Diddleman.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington. Alderman Musgrove.
Alderman Musgrove is excused. Roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn. Director of Wastewater Royce Carlyle. Finance Director Jamie Matriot. City Engineer Tim Gregowitz. Human Resource Director Jim Schneider. Director of Library Leander Spearman. Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill. Director of Public Works Chuck Schaefer. Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Belville. Health and Housing Director Bob Sabal.
There's a couple of them absent tonight. A couple of them went home sick today. So I know, here comes Chief Clay, but I know that Mike Parks is here for Chuck. I know Jim Schneider went home not feeling well. Who's the other one we're missing? Is there one other one? Those three.
That's it.
Okay, so we got the department heads accounted for. Okay, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, before we get to any further, we'll ask you to pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand. Join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation, not a ground, indivisible and free and just for all.
Okay, I just want to make sure we go over the safety concerns. If we would have to leave the council chambers for bad weather, tonight it looks like we're in pretty good shape, but you never know these days, any given month. The police officers here in the building would help guide us through the lobby. Across from the clerk's office is a stairway down to the basement. If we had to leave for some reason, such as fire, smoke, any of those reasons, to evacuate the building, we'd ask that you carefully go out the front door, cross the street carefully, and meet to kind of get a head count and help us look around and see if there's anybody for sure we know didn't follow us out in front of the St. Clair County sign. So we appreciate your cooperation there. As I said, there's no public hearing this evening. If we do speak, please speak into the microphone. Wait till I call on you. And Aldermen, also, we are videotaping, so please speak into the microphones, please, to help pick everything up. At this time, I'll open public participation. Keep your comments to two to three minutes and try to keep them on what's on the agenda tonight if possible. Yes, ma'am.
Two negative, Lillian Schneider. All sewer and trash bills paid with no six water shut-off notices. Can St. Louis and Bellevue support two soccer fields? Where will this leave Bellevue? Next big question. What is the name of the new hotel? It has been over a year. The public has a right to know. If there is no name now, there never was one. Just a look-good, sound-good situation. Be honest with the people. All the money the city has spent and no name, was it just a dream to fool the public? Why has the developers not come forward with the hotels? Not hotel, hotels. People demand to put a stop to this secrecy. It's the taxpayers' money being spent. No more behind closed-door businesses. You can't say you're going to build a hotel over a year later, still have no name. Something wrong somewhere. It's just going to be just like the big white elephant. No airlines, no hotels. Can't get one, how are you going to get three? Just keep spending the taxpayers' money.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir?
John Bowman, I live off of 2 North Forty-Ninth Street. I went to church this last Sunday and around in the nine o'clock hour, my Bible study starts at nine thirty. I was surprised the number of homeless people that were walking up and down north belt west and there's a woman digging through the dumpster to get aluminum cans, which is okay. Aluminum is thirty-four cents a pound. But I think that Bellevue is a city the size of Bellevue. We don't want to get a homeless problem. You know, it's going to get bigger and bigger and I can't see it getting any smaller and smaller. What I've been led to believe is that there are no homeless shelters for men in the entire area. Women, there's between eleven and thirteen, I understand, but there's none for men. And perhaps at some point, the city council might address this problem. That's, I think it's an issue. Thank you very much, folks.
Thanks. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir?
Start, Leonard, 318 South Twenty-Ninth Street, Bellevue. Police, the old saying, "Police would say, 'Stop or I will shoot,'" no longer seems to be enforced anymore. I just thought the police might want to clarify that. Is it enforced or is it not? It doesn't seem to be in large parts of this country. A lot of talk about the Franklin Neighborhood Association this week, but right next door, across from grade school, Franklin, there is a dope dealer narcotics and drug, narcotics drug dealer and has been selling drugs for years. And I know at least four people who died from overdoses, but the city doesn't seem to want or be able to put her out of business. And as far as this police station, as they say in Texas, "All hat, no cattle." Could describe our police department. Big fancy building, but most people seem to want more police on the streets. Heck with the big multi-million dollar police building. They want cops on the street. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Hearing none, I will close public participation. We move on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. I want to start off by recognizing, I don't think there's anyone here from the Basic Initiative tonight, recognize the character word of the month for February is trustworthiness, and its definition is truthfulness in words and actions, being honest and reliable in words and actions. At this time, I'd like to, if there's no objection, I have two board replacements or reappointments. We've been kind of going through and just cleaning some things up and found out that Mr. Friedrich's appointment to the Parks Board was about to, or did just run out, and the same for Terry Mackin. So I would ask, if there's no objections, to vote on my recommendation to reappoint Glenn Friedrich, who's been a longtime member, and Mr. Terry Mackin, who's been on at least one five-year term, to be reappointed for another five-year term as what the Arden Estates for Parks Board for another term on that board. Do I hear motion? Motion by Alderman Diddleman, second by Alderman Seibert. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I would ask for a motion to approve appoint Molly McKenzie to serve a one-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission. Molly, if you looked at her resume, has certainly qualified. They took, when they look at historic preservation, they certainly are looking for people who meet certain criteria and credentials. If you see that, she certainly does. Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Kinsella. Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Motion carries. I read on the agenda that the city clerk would like to give a presentation regarding the transfer of services from Bellevue Township to the city of Bellevue. So Dallas, we will let you.
Hey, thank you. About a year ago this time, I had a town hall meeting here with a little bit of a presentation as well regarding what I was hoping would take place with the township. And now I'd like to go over some more things with you because now Bellevue Township did vote on January nineteenth of this year to transfer services to the city of Bellevue, contingent upon the acceptance of those services by the city, that being the city council.
Can I just, real quick, I just, I don't want to forget this. We have not received, and you're the clerk of the township, but we have not received the resolution.
Okay.
From the township. So before we can take any action, because we talked about this today again, we must receive the resolution. We've read it in the paper, but no offense, sometimes the paper isn't a hundred percent accurate. We have to have the document.
I'm sure Brian Flynn, who's the township attorney and also our city assistant attorney, can give you that. Moving on, before the city attorney does draft an ordinance, I'd like to share some of my thoughts, and these are my opinions. This is not the, coming from the administration. These are just my thoughts as being township clerk and what I've seen on my short, you know, two and a half, almost three years there. The first thing I want to go over with you are obviously project goals, responsibilities, my findings, recommendations, and then a conclusion. I'd like to share those with you because the reason for this taking place is so that we can save the taxpayers' money while still providing the exact same services. That was the purpose of the dissolution. Okay. For the project goal, the first thing we're going to need is for the city council of Bellevue to pass an ordinance accepting these services. I'd like to see a seamless transition wherein we make sure that all the services are kept up while, like I said, saving costs. And state law does prevent the dissolution from taking place until the end of the elected official's terms. Even though I'd like to see it happen sooner, the law was written in that manner. As you can see in my next slide here, this is the law verbatim from the Illinois State statute. And it's a little long, so I won't read it to you. However, it states that the services that are required by state statute are that of two-hundred-and-forty, up to two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars per month to individuals who qualify. The Aldermen, you'll see in front of you, I did put a paper that is the worksheet for the qualifications of one who would like to receive general assistance. And I will tell you, that is the only state mandated function of the township. So as I said, the state mandates we provide the general assistance. So these services will not go anywhere, no matter what takes place. By law, they have to continue. The only way you qualify is if you have absolutely no money and very, very little assets. You also need to be awaiting other assistance from a state or federal program. So obviously, you can see this is a short-term assistance program. This is for somebody to get on, get emergency help for a month or two while they're waiting for another program to kick in, or they're awaiting an opportunity for employment. And so the best thing we can do is, to provide these services, is also to help people find the right direction to be able to be self-sustaining. Currently, the town fund does have another thing that it does from the township. It provides funds to different community projects. You know, speaking of Franklin Neighborhood Association, they donate money to Franklin Neighborhood to provide camps for kids and other things in the program, such as a wide variety from a gardening program over by Bellevue West High School to a puppet program for the children. Just a lot of different things in the community, especially food pantries is another main thing that they currently do. And we also subsidize PSOP, which the city also does some of these things already. So that's why I feel like it would be a good place to find that responsibility in our community development department, which already exists. Okay, regarding the general assistance, the township's day-to-day business is providing that general assistance of up to two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars per month to individuals. Currently, there are forty clients within the city of Bellevue that qualify for these, for this program. If you call around to other townships, you'll find that they have more or less zero to four clients, and so their working budgets are not as large as the city of Bellevue's. So what they have said is that sometimes when they run out of funds, they will push people to go see Bellevue Township. And so obviously, the people in Bellevue shouldn't be paying to take care of others from other communities. Bellevue money should be paying to help people in Bellevue. And so one of the keys when we move over to the city is that we use individuals like Jim Riquita, who already do background checks for the city, and make sure that the people that we're assisting, we rightfully should be doing so to protect the taxpayers' interest. The other things that they'll be doing on a day-to-day basis is if somebody walks in or work to call, they assist them with the process to apply for general assistance and other things. Okay, there are opportunities to increase efficiency and effectiveness. As I said, that was part of the reason for making this move. You know, we already have a structure. There's great things going on with the city hall. It's being remodeled. There's going to be a private waiting area and office for general assistance. So it's going to be very well-functioning and very private and an atmosphere that the client, the individual who needs assistance, would be able to feel comfortable. Also, we already have copiers. We already have employees here at city hall, and so we'll have a great ability to assist those at all times we are open. I'd also like to see us proactively market the assistance programs. Here at the city, we do a city newsletter that goes out to every residence quarterly. I'd like to see something about Bellevue Township and that assistance program included in there, as well as belvelcares.org. The way I see this going is for your community development department, if somebody comes to the community development department and requests funding for a certain youth program or for funding for a food pantry, it would go in front of a committee, the Community Development Committee, which could meet monthly, as all other committees, and then recommend the funding to the council, whether or not it's something they think that should be approved. The next thing we can do is, we can work with the state for delivery of workforce training to these general assistance clients. Obviously, the state is very well-versed in providing people with workforce training, and so we can work with them in St. Clair County in making sure that we're doing the best we can and not overlapping any services that already exist. Also initiate some discussions with other nonprofits in the area and see who we can hook up together to make sure that when somebody walks in the door, they call, we're putting them in the right place. Because as I said, with the township, to qualify, it is very, very stringent. You must have no income. There's age requirements. This isn't to help families. These are for single individuals who are just upon hard times and for whatever reason are not receiving any other assistance. So like I said, very, very few qualify for this, but we, I still feel like we can help point people in the right direction even if they don't qualify for our programs. And our goal is to keep them off of our township rolls, and if they're on it, to move them off of them. As far as general assistance is concerned, I see monthly reporting to the Aldermen for approval by city council. So that would be those individuals who are receiving that assistance. It would come before city council for audit purposes. Wherein, you did not, you would not approve those individuals. You know, they either meet the requirements or they do not. However, you audit the amount of individuals and the amount of money they're receiving, and you're making sure it's all been done properly. The community development committee, as I said, they could have their own committee that would then send that on to the council for final approval. Okay, for my conclusion here, I want to tell you some figures. You'll see that the township is currently spending about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. Of that four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty thousand is going to those general assistance folks. That's the forty individuals once a month, so that's times twelve, times the two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. And then community development, they are giving out approximately eighty thousand dollars to the community for different projects that they feel is necessary. The overhead at the township is currently two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So if you notice the overhead, that's where we're going to be able to save our money. Also, one good thing to keep in mind is the transfer, the transfer of funds from a township to the city will also take place. Those current funds sit at seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So that three-quarter of a million dollars that the township currently has on reserve, we can use that to fund our program for six years without having to levy one dollar in taxes. It also gives us the opportunity to then see exactly what we're going to need moving forward. Because my goal would be to sit down and see who those forty individuals are and work to help them to get off those roles or to make sure that they even qualify for those roles. So we need some time to make sure we know what the budget's going to be for the township. The township derives its revenue with four-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand in property taxes. There's also a replacement tax for sixty-five thousand dollars. Now here at the city, my belief is that this simple replacement tax of sixty-five thousand dollars a year will cover all of the overhead, which would be a salary and office expenses for an individual providing service to those clients. As far as an employee is concerned, it is my opinion that one part-time position would do the job, and you have different ways that you can provide that. You can provide that with somebody working twenty hours a week, eight a.m. to twelve. Also with my assistant clerk and the city clerk providing the ability to help a client during the hours that the, that part-time employee is not available there. So like I said, that's sixty-five thousand. We can have one part-time employee at approximately twenty hours a week. IT support, Locust software, telephone office supplies, and as I alluded to earlier, the private office with waiting area that will happen with the redesign of city hall. So for the general assistance, once again, that's just the program with the forty individuals. It would be overseen by the city clerk, who would have a caseworker under them who would deal with the clients directly, prepare claims and submit to finance, and the city council would audit that. With the community development, which is the giving out of the funds for community projects, the mayor obviously would oversee the director of community development, and he would send on to his committee the request for funding and then approved by city council. And that's all I have for you now. I appreciate you giving me the time to share some of my thoughts. So thank you very much.
Very good. I would ask, did you email that presentation or can you?
Yeah, Jennifer will, yeah, absolutely email that out to all.
Okay. Okay. If there's no questions at this time, this is, you know, very preliminary. It's, we need the resolution so we can, the council can officially act, and then we're going to appoint a task force to look at all this, okay? At this time, I'll move on to approval of the minutes from the January nineteenth council meeting. What's your pleasure? Motion by Alderman Kinsella. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Elmore. Do I hear discussion or additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting and filing for review signify and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Payroll claims and disbursements. I'd ask for a motion to do that. For the, what's listed here, the, we got three million, one-thirty-nine, six-sixty-nine point seventeen cents, and the payroll amount is seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, six-fifty-three, and forty-two cents. Motion by Alderman Ovian for approval, second by Alderman Wiggington. Do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for approval, acceptance, and file the city attorney's report dated January twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen. What's your pleasure? Alderman Seibert, make a motion. Do I hear a second? Second, Alderman Tyler. Do I hear discussion? All in favor of accepting and filing the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Motion for Master Sewer, Ed.
On behalf of the Master Sewer Committee, I'd like to make a motion to award Missionary Venture Sewer Project bid in the amount of two million, eighty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and fifty cents to pluck her construction.
Motion by Alderman Diddleman, second by Alderman Hazel. Discussion. Yes, sir?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I would ask that the chairman of Master Sewer, if he wouldn't mind just going ahead and providing, okay, the savings difference between the original projected estimate and what the cost saving is under this bid.
Royce, do you have it? The engineers estimated it saved about a hundred and some odd thousand, wasn't it?
The engineers estimated was like two-point-four million.
Okay, and you got it down to two million, eighty-five thousand.
Yes, sir.
In some, okay? Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm asking, coming from administration, you see in your packet and Aldermen, I've talked to many of you in the last couple of days previous to this meeting. I'm asking for a motion to approve plans for temporary relocation of the administrative offices and meetings in the administrative offices, and also includes clerk, treasurer, all of us here at city hall, for approximate timeline from July two thousand sixteen through January at the latest, I believe, two thousand seventeen. It was spelled out in your packet. Just real quickly, so everybody here and the public's not left out, the mayor's office and the finance director and the marketing and website manager would go, the police chief's found room for us in some of the unfinished areas up there at the police department on the third floor. The economic development and planning and zoning would go and squeeze in over at health and housing. Bob's got room. They've worked that out to put Anessa's department over there for that time. And then the clerk and treasurer, our plan is, and we've worked with the, both the architect and we got some advice even from our local Egyptian stationary to see if the people and desk and cubicles could fit into five-ten in both the atrium. And then the area where the Main Street director is, he would be moved down to the old office that Main Street was in years ago. I believe the address is two-twenty-seven East Main. We own that small building. That's where the two-hundredth anniversary store was. So the Main Street people know now that they would have to go to there. So this should, it's going to be cozy, but we should be handicap accessible. We will not have to rent a building under this plan. One of the big issues for me was talking to Rich Peppers, our director of IT. All the phone lines and computer lines are in all these buildings I've said mention, so we don't have to get into any extra expense. And the utilities are on all these buildings. So we believe that, we know there's going to be a few things to work out, but we believe we've already preliminarily addressed, you know, the vast majority of why this should work. Also in there is a, in your, in your packet is a list of the locations of move, remove, the locations of where we will recommend and committee meetings will go. There's many committee meetings on a given month that are held here in city hall, and we'd have to certainly understand the reason we're recommending. It's a must. They're going to be abating all the asbestos ceiling and floor tile in this building. The building is sixty years old next year. As you know and hear, we, in the summertime, when the, when the air conditioner system gets going and it sweats, those ceiling tiles do have asbestos in them, and, and we've had them start to fall even because fortunately they fell on days when nobody was in here, but we had to clean it up properly. And, and so we want to get all this stuff done. There will be remodeling here in this unit. The city council chambers is probably the one area that gets the most facelift. Is that fair to say, Kenny?
Yes.
Everything else is handicap bathrooms, ceiling tile, new lighting, new flooring, and, and, and they will, everything will be repainted before it's put back. In here, there will be an emergency door put over in this corner. We've talked about doing that ever since the terrible incident in Kirkwood back in two thousand eight, I think that was. And, and we've, you know, we just, we've had the extra officers here, but we know that there should be another way out of this room. The design you'll see in the near future, if everything holds true, would upstairs where the police department vacates, we would actually have a balcony or a mezzanine to help. And the city hall, the council chambers would go back to the police department entrance way where you see it now. So we'll pick up some seating. You certainly don't want to do all this work and then not have any growth for the future. We see now that some council meetings on certain issue nights can be pretty crowded, but this would pick us up. The handicap bathrooms right behind the other side of that wall would be put in. So things that are must, much needed and been talked about for many years. So like I said, every ounce of the final design is not done, but they're moving along. The police department should be done, and, and we're hoping for them to move in in June, and we want to be ready to go. And by doing this approval now, we can get it right away in the, in the April, May, and June newsletter, and then again in the July, August, September. So it gets in everybody's home explaining all these moves. We'll get temporary signage, and like Dean, I'm sure can put a thing on his sewer bills where clerk, where they're going to be moving to, the clerk and treasurer, so that we can do everything we can to not have to spend a lot of extra money. It'll be on our website, but we can go ahead and well tell the public what's going to happen during that five to six month. Six being the worst-case scenario, we believe, five months maybe, that we can get out of here, let them do all their work. It'll be cheaper to do it that way and safer. We won't put any employees at risk with asbestos abatement. We won't be working at nights or weekends, so we can have a better cost on the project, and we believe this is a reasonable request. So I ask for a motion as is stated in here. Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Wiggington. Do I hear discussion? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. You and I have had discussions. The city attorney and I have been in an email exchange, and what these discussions really boil down to is that I have had emails from residents. I've had phone calls. I have had face-to-face meetings with people who have expressed concerns regarding their ability to access these meetings that will be moved to Lindenwood University. The city attorney has been kind enough to do some research for me with respect to the Open Meetings Act, and I'm going to ask him in just a moment to address the section of the Open Meetings Act that this information really pertains to. And in addition to that- really pertains to. And, and in addition to that, subsequent email exchanges that we had regarding the clauses with respect to any violations on the Open Meetings Act as well. And then what I'd like to do, Mayor, is based upon the conversation that you and I have had, is if you would address the issue of having Lindenwood University provide a letter of insurance to parties that have been negatively impacted by prior interactions with the university to give them some, you know, some peace of mind, some assurance that there's not gonna be any issues with them attending these meetings. So, to begin with, I'd like to start with the city attorney.
Yes, when the inquiry was made by Alderman Randall, I noted to him that Section Two of the Open Meetings Act pertently provides that all meetings required by the act should be public, held at a specified times and places which are convenient and open to the public. So, in this instance, the question becomes, is the location that's selected convenient and open to the public? And it appears, of course, that it is. It's, it's...
And those questions were asked and, and promised by Lindenwood. And if you get me the list of people who might have had during some of those times a while back, we'll get that clarified or cleared up.
You know, one, one thing that we, I noted in a conversation I had with the mayor as well is that I know that District two oh one, until I guess relatively recently, had its offices on the Lindenwood campus and held its meetings there as well.
I think the one thing we were looking for when we started looking at this, just to answer, and, and Ken and I have had some conversation about this, we were looking to make sure we didn't, that we could get the two council meetings, the, the two committee meetings that precede the council meetings that night, like Master Sewer tonight, Streets and Grades on the third Monday, and zoning, all in the same place and not have to change locations one month or two months. We, and, and we were able to do that here. It would be in the Dixon Center. There is an elevator that's handicap accessible. They have chairs that we don't have to go out and rent chairs. They're willing to let us use them. They have tables that the aldermen can sit at a table. And, and those things are all in place. We have a portable PA system that we can take out there or, you know, lock up out there for that short period of time. And we feel like we can do this and there's no cost to us. We asked that question. I did tell them that we would follow up. We're gonna be providing the police presence for those meetings. And I did tell them that we would have to just, they originally said, "No problem," but I told them we would evaluate if we thought there was some need that we were overdoing our welcome, that we needed to bring out our maintenance people to do any cleaning up or vacuuming up, we would, you know, consider that. But the nice thing I'm looking for again is consistency, something somewhat close to downtown because many of my staff people are running out of other meetings or running from things in, in their offices that'll be at five-ten or they'll be at, you know, the new police station, et cetera. So, I didn't wanna get too extreme on one end of town or the other. We needed to keep it in the corporate city limits, we felt. That was a must requirement. So, we, we looked at different things. I had had some conversation with a couple of other places. I had some churches that were willing, but I thought that might be frowned upon for as, you know, taking it to a particular denomination. So, Lindenwood, after I had some conversation, they, they did some checking and said that they could hold those council meetings and the zoning board meetings there. Everything else is pretty much spelled out. Tom Poor has been a real trooper and so has Leander. Leander's taken a few things at the library. The, the Firehouse Number Four, which has a lot of trainings there now and a lot of meetings already, is taking the lion's share of your committee meetings, if you notice on the list. So, this is my recommendation. And Alderman Bittner?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to reiterate some of the concerns that Alderman Randall noted. There's been a lot, there's a lot of animosity yet towards Lindenwood from some individuals. There's, in fact, there's two individuals here tonight that are banned from Lindenwood that attend the council meetings on a regular basis. For them to attend Lindenwood, I feel, would cause them, I, I don't want them to feel uncomfortable and fear some type of retribution if they make any statements towards Lindenwood. I'd like to know who you talked to at Lindenwood University to get permission, because I wanna read exactly one of the letters that were sent, or portions of that, that were sent to one of the individuals. And this is from Eric Schuler, who is the general counsel of Lindenwood. And he, he states that "The administration wishes to make it clear to you that you are not invited onto any Lindenwood property and no employee or student is authorized to grant, to grant such permission. Any trespassing will be reported to the Belleville Police and prosecuted to the full extent of the law." So, if Lindenwood's gonna give warning to these individuals in writing, I, I would like, and I would, before I approve this tonight or vote to approve this, we should have something in writing to each one of these individuals from their general counsel.
We, we can ask for that. I, I talked to Dr. Barger and Assistant Vice President Mary Reuter, and that's where my conversation was at and that's where the permission came from. And, and they assured me that the people who, one had had a ban at one time and that's been lifted even before this request, and, and the other person, they didn't realize there was a ban. So, they, they will be glad to address that. They, they told me also they felt that this was a good opportunity. They'd be happy to do it if the city's requesting it and would help, to help maybe, you know, bring all this back, you know, closer, you know, resolve things and put things behind us and work together. And, and like I said, I, I think it's a, you know, it's gonna be convenient for some of those neighbors possibly to walk to the meetings. And like I said, it's, we do need a place to go for a short period of time, for about five, six months. Rafi?
I have one concern that they do have night classes at night. Parking is a major concern. Where will we, will we be able to park?
There, there's gonna be adequate parking across the street to the west of the Kern Mail Dorm. There's also some parking in the rear. There's also parking over towards Firehouse Number Two in that parking lot they have by the Girls' Dorm. There's, there's ample handicap parking that's available that sits empty because not very many handicap people are on the campus on any given time unless you have a function like this. So, there's ample handicap parking that seniors and people who have the handicap needs, they can park right up near the building. And, and they said they would work with us as we got closer to July to try to map out those concerns, but we felt that there was adequate parking. Mr. Wiggington?
And you know, Mayor, six months, seven months goes by pretty quick. And I appreciate Alderman Bittner. I think he brought up a very, very valid point. But I think we could take what was perceived maybe as a negative over the past few months and turn it into a, a real positive, that these people are welcome. We're not gonna shut them down. I know Lindenwood will, will work with us. And, and I appreciate Alderman Bittner, you know, standing up for us constituents. But, you know, one thing about it, essentially located, that room is, you know, and I know you've probably looked at other, that room is, is a good place to meet.
The room's ideal. We went and looked at it. This is the room, when you come up the stairway, if you choose to do that, of the old cafeterias, those of us who went to Belleville West, you would turn to the right and that's their banquet, number one banquet room, they call now. And then there's a partition. It's, it's three-fourths of that whole side, which will hold way over a hundred seats. I mean, you can put chairs in there. But then there's a petition and they can hold the committee meeting right behind there. And, and that way people can start coming into the council meeting and the committee meeting won't be, it won't be like they'll be standing out in the hall waiting for one meeting to get over or come in, you know. It'll be very, it's a, it's a unique, it's a good situation, the way it's set up, that we can have the people come in and sit for the council meeting ahead of time and the committee meeting can be going on up until the full hour if they need it before they come out to the meeting. So, it, it does have plenty of seating, you know, and meets all those requirements. So, those are all things we looked at. And, and it'll help to have that. You couldn't have the committee meeting at a different location because people couldn't get to the council meeting on time then. So, they park one time, go to both meetings if that's where the case is, and we can accomplish all that. So, that was one of the things we were looking for too, as we were looking for a location, okay?
Mayor.
Yes, sir?
Like I said, I'm, I'm not comfortable voting in favor of this until we have something in writing from Lindenwood. Does this have to be approved tonight or can we table this until the next meeting?
I, I would recommend we approve it with the understanding that our city attorney will talk to their council. And see, I would ask that Mr. Randall or yourself, if you have the knowledge of the names, I'll double, 'cause they told me that they only really knew of the one person for sure that was banned and he has since been lifted. 'Cause they've been in dialogue with him and he's, they've been talking to him and things have been a little better. But if you have a list of some names, we will, we will, we'll get them dealt with and attorneys can talk. And if, and here's the deal, if it doesn't, if that becomes an issue, we can go back. But in the meantime, we gotta come up with a place that meets all the handicap accessibility and the availability. And you can't beat the price, 'cause there's no price and it's centrally located. And, and, you know, so we gotta find those, we gotta find those things if we're going to say no. 'Cause right now, we have looked. And like I said, I, I know we could probably come up with a church or two, but there's some people who would probably say, "Well, we don't wanna go to that church. It's a city meeting." The grade schools have so many programs at these schools that they just couldn't guarantee me six months in a row on a Monday, on a Monday and then, and then that Thursday night with the zoning board. This happened to be free. They just said they wouldn't schedule any banquets in there and it happened to be free. So, I would ask that we would approve it, understanding that we got plenty of time. If we have to amend something, we can come back and amend it. But I will, I will work. If you get with Garrett, we'll work to get that worked out. And they had told me in a verbal conversation that they will make all that, they will give all the assurance that they need, but we can do it in writing. I don't have a problem with that. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we move to the next page. We got communications and I'll turn this over to the clerk to read. I don't know if you have any, any heartburn or if you wanna let him try to read them all at once. It's up to you guys.
All at once.
Okay. I'm directly involved with twelve E, so I probably wanna abstain from that one. And then if we could just separate, or can I just discuss some things about twelve G? Mayor, if you want to, I just have some questions.
Okay, so you wanna take out twelve E and twelve G and vote on them separately?
Yes.
So, read all the rest of them first.
Okay, deal.
Twelve A, request from September eleventh Memorial Walkway of Southern Illinois Committee to hold a nine-eleven moment of remembrance ceremony the afternoon of Sunday, September eleventh, two thousand sixteen, at Firehouse Number Four, eleven-twenty-five South Illinois Street. Twelve B, request from September eleventh Memorial Walkway of Southern Illinois Committee to host their fifth annual five-k run. This event will be held on Sunday, September eleventh, two thousand sixteen, with a start time of nine-eleven a.m. The start and finish area is North Third Street and West C Street between Huff Park and Franklin School. The committee is requesting one or two police officers for traffic control at to-be-determined locations. They are also requesting street barricades and traffic cones to be placed in certain areas. Twelve C, request to approve the closing of East Main Street on Friday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, from four p.m. to nine-thirty p.m., from the east side of High Street to the west side of Charles Street and the first blocks of North and South Jackson Streets and North and South Charles Streets for the city's annual downtown Halloween Trick or Treat event to be held from five-thirty p.m. to eight p.m. The event is scheduled for Friday before Halloween. Twelve D, request to approve the closing of State Route one-fifty-nine from A Street to Washington Street and the first blocks of East Main Street and West Main Street from eight a.m. to one p.m. on Friday, November eleventh, two thousand sixteen, for the city's annual Veterans Day Ceremony to be held at eleven a.m. at the Belleville Public Square. Request includes approval to allow ceremony to take place inside the lobby of City Hall in case of inclement weather. Twelve F, Anide Shriners Circus Days Parade. Request for Anide Shriners to hold their Circus Days Parade on Friday, June third, two thousand sixteen, commencing at seven-thirty p.m. and assistance from the Belleville Police Department. Also permission to locate the reviewing stand on the southeast quadrant of the Public Square and to be provided with barricades to be placed around the reviewing stand.
I have a motion to approve those as read so far. Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Cybert. Any discussion on those read thus far in that first group? Hearing none, all in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
All right. Twelve V, Midtown Main Street Association is requesting to have their second annual chocolate crawl on Saturday, February thirteenth, from ten to two, in Midtown Belleville from Sixth Street to Twenty-Eighth Street. The crawl will begin and end at Nanny Lou's Kitchen, nineteen-twenty-six West Main Street, where crawlers will receive a map of all participating merchants. Crawlers will receive a free chocolate tree at each stop and on completing the list can register for gift baskets to be given away immediately after the crawl. There is no charge to participate and there are approximately twenty stops.
Do I hear motion to approve? Alderman Pusa, do I hear a second? Alderman Cybert, do I hear discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there adequate parking for all these people that's gonna be coming and going during this time? Or will they be coming at separate times or if they start at one time, where are they going to park?
All along Main, okay, dress. It'll be all along West Main Street, 'cause it's all the different shops where they can go, so.
Are most of the shops downtown or where the shops at?
The shops are all along from Sixth Street to Twenty-Eighth Street. It'd be a great promotional for, for West Belleville. The only reason I want, I probably, I will just abstain from vote because I am directly involved in this.
So, we have a motion, we have a second to approve this event. And Alderman Bittner is stating already publicly he's gonna abstain. If there's no, no other objections, all in favor of approving the event signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Twelve G, Eckerd Florist Incorporated, request from Eckerd Florist Incorporated to place a refrigerated cooler in one of their designated loading zones located in the first block of North Second Street from Saturday, February sixth, two thousand sixteen, and removed on or before Saturday, February twentieth, two thousand sixteen, to accommodate extra flower storage for Valentine's Day. They will coordinate with the street department for cones and lighted barricades.
First of all, do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Hazel. Alderman Bittner, you stated you had a concern.
Mayor, and you've asked for this for several, several times. Is, do, do you know during the year or the beginning of the year when you're gonna be doing this with the, with the Florida?
I think we, Rita, we could probably put it, you could probably put it in one, one approval for the whole year, but you were trying to wait and see if you needed it. You're trying to build a cooler inside additional one.
The holidays fluctuate. I mean, the events fluctuate depending on the season, depends on when they fall. I can't.
Exact dates. You know, when, when Christmas falls and how early it starts, you know, tells her, I guess, when she gets, keep in mind, we've had this before, not because I'm involved with this, which I wouldn't be voting on this either, but as we've run into with downtown. The building that we rent is right built on the, on the city, the city lines all the way. There's not one parking stall that came with that building. That's the way it was built, nineteen-twenty-six. There's no extra property other than it's immediately the sidewalk and then a designated alley in the back. So, this is, as we started when we went, when she applied for the business there, to have the loading zone approved, it's because it's like a couple of other places downtown. Our city fathers didn't, didn't have a loading area in the back and stuff like that when they designed some of downtown. So...
Mayor, you said, are there plans to build a cooler inside?
We have talked about it. I think it's fair to say, you know, I, I had that insight, but it's, it's a financial thing and, and we're hoping to get to that. And hopefully then, you know, that would accommodate the needs. But for now, it's, it's just based on these couple of holidays.
And is it, when, when the cooler is there, is it wired per?
It's overhead.
Overhead. And is that, is that per code?
We've had the electrical inspector look at it, 'cause I made sure in case somebody's gonna question me. So, I had, I had had, asked Kenny Bosler to look at it, to make sure that we were following, you know, that no, no safety problems. Cones, the barricades are put up and, you know, we, we, we have not, I have not, and I don't know, staff, have you received any complaints about this? Yes, sir?
And Mayor, you know, as a businessman and merchant, you know, I don't wanna see anybody's hands tied where they can't do business. I don't think you're overstepping your bounds. I don't think it's an inconvenience to anybody. You know, we, we need a sales tax revenue city. We gotta let people do business. And I, at forty-two oh four West Main, he's got his brewing operation there right now and he's got a huge cooler attached to that building now because his, his business is expanding. You know, I wanna see everybody have a chance to do business.
And I think it's just for the council's sake, Rita has talked, the ones that would probably impact the most would be the Club Escapade across the street, 'cause they have nighttime parking issues. And they certainly gave their blessing to her that that didn't bother them, because they, you know, nighttime's, you know, takes up a parking stall there. Daytime, it's in our loading zone to begin with, I think, right, Rita? Basically, it's right there at the loading zone, so it's already in one of the designated spots during the day. If there's no further questions, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go on no petitions, resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only Resolution thirty-two fifty-one and thirty-two fifty-two and thirty-two fifty-three.
Shall move.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear discussion? All in favor of reading those three motions by title only. Is there opposition if we read them as a group?
No.
Title only and as a group signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All in favor of reading those three motions, uh, by title only? Is there opposition if we read them as a group?
No.
Title only and as a group signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
14A, Resolution 3251, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 for the St. Patrick's Day Parade and Lucky Leprechaun 5K on Saturday, March 12, 2016, from 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. 14B, Resolution 3252, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 for the Greater Bellevue Chamber of Commerce Chili Cookoff from 5:00 p.m. Thursday, October 6, to midnight Saturday, October 8, 2016. 14C, Resolution 3253, a resolution urging members of the United States Congress to take steps to reduce dumping of foreign steel.
Motion to approve Resolution 3251, 52, and 53.
Motion by Alderman Silsby, second by Alderman Kinsella. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Denelmann.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Motion carries. Uh, unfinished business? Yes, sir?
Um, just, we had been talking about Lindenwood earlier. It's been, it's February, and Lindenwood was supposed to have a plan for the parking issues.
It's been submitted. Staff's reviewing it. Alderman Randall, he had asked me that question earlier in my office. We just received it, uh-
Friday.
Huh?
Friday.
Friday. Um, and, and like I said, uh, staff's reviewing it now, so we'll have it to you guys soon.
And as far as, there's some new houses that have been occupied on our, on West A Street, and, uh, are these houses, it's, it's a part of the new construction or new remodeling? Were, are sprinklers in those sys, in those houses?
We have our sprinklers around morning at 2000 West A for the first house, the sprinkler footage, plumbers are still engineering, so we have a meeting with our work.
The, um, 20, 2007 West A is recently occupied. Wasn't one of the new remodels. Does that have a sprinkler system in it? When we initially came to the plan and told them what was required, we're, we're kinda using the guideline of when the, uh, in the United States, when the, uh, the Dormitory Sprinkler Act went into effect, they were given two years for compliance to make all, to bring all dormitories up. So, we understand that it takes some process to get engineers into the houses and figure a plan and design a plan for both the alarm system and the sprinkler system. So, we're working on this first house tomorrow to truly let them know what they need, and so it, it's something that's not gonna happen overnight, but we felt that since the, uh, the sprinkler, the Dormitory Sprinkler Act, when it went into effect, that had a, a time frame for compliance, we're, we're following a similar timeframe to try to get them all sprinkled.
And once they test the first one, it should go faster.
Yeah, once, once they know what they have to work with and what it takes to meet the standard, 'cause every house is gonna be different based on the water lines going into the house, trying to figure out what they're gonna need to replace, and, and they're gonna have to figure out, based on square footage, the, the type and size of head for each room. It's a, it's not, not anything where a plumber can just toss a pipe in and put a sprinkler head in.